This is, this is our first budget kickoff meeting of the year. I'm happy to say that it's the CIP. And for those that are new to the council, um, it, this is a pretty, uh, I would say special, but it's a unique way that we build our budget here in Merriam. In the city of Merriam, we start with the CIP and figure out what do we need to do to take care of the city? Infrastructure needs, one of the core functions that we do as a local government. And then we basically build the budget around it. That's a little unique. What happens in most other cities is they actually figure out what are all the programming needs that they need, how, what do they want to pay everybody? What do they think it's going to cost to fuel all the vehicles? And then whatever's left over, then they build a CIP. That's why generally a lot of cities end up getting behind on their capital improvement programs. They end up deferring maintenance and they end up spending more on it because it's a heck of a lot more expensive to rebuild than it is just to rehab. That's why we do a lot of mill and overlay because it actually prolongs the life of our streets. We don't have to go down below, uh, the, the grade. We can just take a couple inches of asphalt off. We don't have to reconstruct most of the things that we do. So it's pretty special that we start with the CIP. I did not invent that. I've just carried that concept on, but I'm very thankful that the city council has a commitment to doing the CIP first. Yes, ma'am?
Because we didn't used to do it that way. And I'm, I do believe that probably it was Phil Lammers and Gail Stevens that worked on that. So it's fitting that we had to announce.
Yeah. It was, uh, it is, it is, it is very special and very unique. So this is our first budget meeting. This is our CIP work session. Uh, this is our 2023 to 2027 five-year CIP. Really what we're asking for when it comes time for approval, which will not be tonight, but is really just for one year. It's the first year of the five-year plan, but we're going to present the full plan to you. So we'll go ahead and get started on that. We'll start with our major projects. We only have one major project. That is Upper Turkey Creek. Uh, this is, uh, these numbers were updated last year. Forty-three million dollar total. We would suspect that that's closer to 50 million now. The Merriam share in the budget is 5.9 million dollars with 2 million of in-kind, uh, which um, is basically an easements and other work that we might do. This likely will not be enough when we actually know what it costs, but this is a major project that has been sitting in the budget for 15-plus years. Um, we do have some funding available to figure out what this cost and move this down the pipeline, but as of right now, this number is what's in the budget, 5.9 million dollars. Uh, that's our major project. Medium projects are going to be our projects that are in between less than five, more than one. Um, again, focusing on the projects that are in our 2023, uh, budget will be the first ones. Uh, we have project pages on each of these, so I'm not going to linger on them too much other than to announce them and then we'll jump into project pages. Our 23 projects are going to be Merriam Drive. That's Johnson Drive to 55th. We would consider that to kind of be the downtown stretch of Merriam Drive. Been a lot of conversation we've had about that with our PSP grant. 50th Terrace Drainage from Engle, excuse me, England to Kessler. It's a drainage project, uh, that we're doing because the following year we have 49th Street, which is a cars project, uh, and that drainage is, uh, kind of tied into that street project. We've got Merriam Drive in 2025, which is 55th Street to Antioch that we consider that to be the north extent. Also, we have a PSP grant that we're going to likely get, uh, approved, we hope to get approved, uh, from the council this year. So that would be the north extent of Merriam Drive. Then we've got a 2025 street and storm drainage rehab project, which is several little small projects that once we looked at it on the map, we said, we just need to make this one large project. Uh, and we'll get into that in a second. And then the last one that's in our medium project is our Merriam Drive Shawnee Mission Parkway to Johnson Drive. Uh, so terminating in downtown or starting, I guess, depending on which way you want to head, uh, would be our 2027 cars projects. We'll jump into each one of those real quick. Merriam Drive improvements. We've got three pictures there of current conditions along Merriam Drive. Uh, the one in the upper right is from our recently approved PSP, or not recently approved, but recently wrapped up, I guess, PSP, uh, downtown project. Uh, give you a, just a kind of a nice little rendering of the, the project as it is currently being designed by BHC Roads. I will tell you that last week we had our first design meeting for the, uh, public, uh, open house for the, the current design as they continue to refine it. I think we had six folks show up. Uh, none of them were pitchforks and torches. A lot of them just had some questions and some suggestions, but it, I think generally the tone was, and I think several of you were in attendance, was that there weren't any major problems with this. I think, uh, as we went through the PSP process, I think that the consultants, community development director, his staff, uh, did a really good job of hearing some of the concerns of the businesses. We had some business folks downtown that had some real concerns about some of it just because it's going to be changed, but some of it, how's it going to impact my business? And I think that, uh, the consultants and, uh, Mr. Dyer did a really, really good job of explaining to them, hey, you know, we can shave these curbs down. We can do some of these things. We can help accommodate some of these things for your business while not abandoning the whole concept of we're trying to build the backbone of a future downtown. So that, that's currently under design for construction next year. We're looking at a mill and overlay, shared use sidewalk, new curbs and gutters, ADA ramps, on-street park and pavement markings. Some street scape improvements and some new LED street lighting. Uh, we're projecting that 4.2 million dollars, approximately half of which will come from cars. Um, the other half would come from our quarter cent sales tax, street and storm water that was renewed two years ago. Uh, we've got a little bit of money that I'll jump to, or well, I will get to when we get to that point, that we could use to perhaps supplement this project. And that's what we're calling our downtown revitalization, uh, account, cap project, I guess. 50th Terrace Drainage from England to Kessler. This starts up at Kessler, goes down to England. This is something that we, this is a top, a stop on our CIP tour. Uh, this is a drainage project where you've got, um, well, you can see that picture. It's not very attractive. It's kind of a mess. It daylights and then goes back into another pipe. It doesn't just daylight and then disperse across yards. It actually, we need to close that pipe off. It's got some, um, underutili, undersized pipes. Uh, when that was put in, there wasn't the same standards that there are now. And also, as Mr. Neal, I'm sure will point out at some point this evening, there are going to be elevated rain events and we need to be right sizing our storm sewers. Uh, so, um, it's important that we go in with this particular project and replace, uh, or renew, renew being whether that's lining it, cure in place, situ form, whatever those things are, uh, to, because they're in backyards. So we won't dig all of this up, uh, that we, we replace or renew those failing storm, storm structures. Um, this is a 1.5 million dollar project. We're going to pay solely out of the street and storm water sales tax. And then we're going to connect that storm water outlet that's behind the home that we stopped at last week. The reason that that project is important is because we're going to go in and we're going to do 49th Street, or we're proposing that we're going to go in and do 49th Street from Antioch to Schweitzer, uh, very similar to what we're doing in 55th this year. Uh, we're going to put some sidewalks on the south side, curb gutter, ADA ramps. Uh, it's a 2.8 million dollar project, uh, and right under the middle of it, I'll go back, is 49th Street. I don't have my laser pointer. Oh, there we go. We've got a mouse on there. You can see right, right here, uh, to go in here and to rehab or to replace these pipes and try to tie them into substandard structures underneath doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense. That's the reason this drainage project is on here because it's the right thing to do, just to kind of point that out because generally we don't get a whole lot into drainage. But in order to facilitate that 49th Street, if we're going to be in there, we need to do it right and do it once. Uh, in 2024 design, 2025 construction, you've got your Merriam Drive 55th Street to Antioch Cars Project. That's a, just a standard mill and overlay sidewalk, ADA ramps, new pavement markings. There perhaps could be some enhancements from the north end PSP. Anybody that has had the opportunity to see that or attend the open meeting would see that there can be, there could be some very drastic, um, updates along Antioch. They have a, I would call it a roundabout except for it's not round. What do they call it? A peanut. So kind of like a round, roundabout, but that would of course require some public meetings would require us working with Overland Park because they own half of that. So, but we have in here for construction in 2025, 3.6 million dollars to do this cars project from 55th Street terminating at Antioch along Merriam Drive. Then our 2025, 2025 street and storm drainage rehab project I showed you, this is going to be from West 71st to East City Limits. I'm sorry, from Antioch to East City Limits along the extent, full extent of West 61st Street. And then there's two segments that are going to go east from Hardy, uh, on West 60th and West 59th Terrace. West 60th, uh, if you will recall, or if you've been out there, we went by it on the tour. It's a divided street. You actually kind of have a north and a south segment of that street with some green space in the middle and it terminates, uh, in Overland Park. Uh, so we're going to go in there, replace the storm drains and sidewalks and, uh, put some pavement markings on there. We're going to actually request watershed funding. So this would be the former SMAC, uh, funding source, which is Stormwater Management Advisory Council, I believe is what SMAC stood for. Uh, so we're going to request, uh, $524,000 for the, um, the storm water project, portion of that project. Merriam Drive Shawnee Mission Parkway to Johnson Drive. This is Merriam Drive, um, Cars Project. This would be the last of Merriam Drive that we would be doing in the five-year plan and the last of Merriam Drive. I think that's all of Merriam Drive. Merriam Drive does extend south of Shawnee Mission Parkway. So, uh, by the end of 2027, by the end of the plan, we would have all of Merriam Drive redone. Uh, so, um, 3.6 million dollars. It's Cars Project, um, to pick up half the price. That has not gone to design yet, but we are in conversation internally about are there different ways we could do the road circulation down there where the road ties in down there at the tri, the Triangle Industrial Park. Um, there's possibilities. We've got plenty of time because we don't even go to design until 2026, but that is programmed in the, the last year of your CIP. That is your medium project summary. Again, the two projects that we're going to be looking for when it comes time for approval will be your Merriam Drive Cars Project and your 50th Terrace Drainage Project. The rest of those are in the plan for the five-year plan. Sometimes those things move around, but generally they stay pretty close. Any questions about your medium projects? Minor projects are projects that are under, generally under a million dollars. Uh, we've got one in here that's over a million, but it's spread out over several years, which is why it's on this page. Uh, again, we've got project pages for all these, but I'll just read them down the line. We've got 75th Street Cars Project. This is something that just recently popped up on the radar. Overland Park is doing 75th Street. So because we share a centerline with them, uh, between Schweitzer and Antioch, they've asked us to partner with them. And, uh, and that would be a 2023 project, which I'll jump into that. Downtown revitalization, the key, uh, component of that being 5701 Development, Public Art Five-Year Program. Johnson Drive Street Improvements from Mackey to East City Limits, our 75th Street Reconstruction, and then the engineering for West, excuse me, Vernon Place Improvements. Then also included in our minor project summary, because all these are less than a million dollars, is our annual program. So we have just annual maintenance budgets. So, uh, these are all projects, but our annual programs, we put hundreds of thousands of dollars in there to implement and to just repair, uh, for example, small drainage projects. We don't budget for everything that might break because sometimes stuff just breaks. And so, uh, we give the public works department, uh, several hundred thousands of dollars a year to deal with their small drainage projects. We will sometimes pull that out and partner some of those things together to create a project. Good example is that 2025 drainage problem, um, 2025, um, what am I looking for, Jim? Street and Storm Drainage Rehabilitation. That actually was something where we started going, well, if we're going to go in there, we're going to take some small drainage, we're going to take some sidewalk money, we're going to take some streetlight money. And we started to say, that just sounds like a project to me. Like why? So, but they aren't all projects. Some of them are just annual programs. Sidewalk maintenance, sidewalk repair, two different pots of money. Uh, residential streetlight program, which is to finish the decorative black pole installations throughout the city. And that, when that is done, which I believe 2023 is our last year.
Yes.
And when that is done, uh, we will jump into the LED conversion. So we will, similar to when we had our sidewalk infill, then we had sidewalk repair, we will just continue to devote money to our streetlight program. We will just go from the conversion to the, the conversion to black decorative to the conversion of LED. Uh, anything that we are doing currently when we replace lights is LED anyway. So we're already, um, kind of infilling some of those things, uh, which is why sometimes they're so clearly evident to residents that there's something that has changed. But when we go in and we do a comprehensive plan, uh, or a comprehensive update of a neighborhood, everything becomes LED at once. People are less, um, it's just brighter all the way around. There's no sore thumbs. And then our pedestrian bicycle mobility program. Uh, this is the result of our BikePed, um, study that was just recently completed with a, uh, several council members and some, uh, some community members who are stakeholders in terms of being bike users. Uh, this is really, um, we will implement some of these things as part of larger projects. We will also implement some of these things just standalone. So we will go into some places and go, well, hey, we can just paint a sharrow here or we can put a sign here. But we might also use this funding as part of another larger program to say, hey, if we could add that to this, this would be a funding source, uh, to, to implement that. So the individual things, uh, which I just said, I'm sorry, but I'll just jump through them again. 75th Street Schweitzer to Antioch Cars Project, half a million dollars. We're going to ask for half of that from cars. We may or may not get that because it's last minute. It's not a whole lot of money. We're actually asking for a whole lot of money for our cars project downtown. So we want to make sure that they understand that's our priority. That's a much bigger ask than this. So at worst case, we're going to need to come up with half a million dollars. Best case, we're going to need to come up with a quarter.
And that goes across I-35 as well?
Schweitzer to Antioch.
So even though that's part of the K-dot, we're, we're doing mill and overlay.
Yep. Uh, we'll, we'll, sure.
So it won't be?
They'll be fixing some curbs along, along that portion, but everything else, just the asphalt.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Question. Well, I haven't, I haven't tried to walk across 75th. What is the walkability of that?
There are lanes on that on our side. We actually have a big black decorative fence that we put over there and then we actually have a walking path.
Okay.
People do walk across it.
Well, I figured.
That is one of the few places you can.
Can cross.
Yeah, especially bridge wise.
Right, unlike Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Correct. Downtown revitalization, uh, the, uh, it's 1.3 million dollars spread out between 23, 24, 25. 250,000 dollars in 23, 250,000 dollars in 25, 850,000 dollars in 24. In 2023, the 250,000 dollars, we anticipate 50,000 of that being needed for design of 5701 Merriam Drive. The 850,000 dollars in 2024 will be for implementation of whatever that design is, uh, and then 250,000 dollars, uh, in 2025. The, the non-5701 money, if you will, will be to implement the PSP or the 20, or the 2040 program to implement, uh, or do some add-ons to any, either, any of the cars projects that touch downtown. So for example, next year, 250,000 dollars. We, it's likely that all of the things we're asking to be bid as part of the cars project will not fit into that budget. And so what we want to do is we want to get some of those add-ons to be able to come back to council and say, hey, as part of the PSP process, there was an entryway monument. We can't afford it in the cars project, but we have a funding source. Would you like us to use this funding source? We can choose not to, and we're not going to use it for anything other than downtown. But it does create a funding source for us to, um, add some flourishes to the things that happen downtown. So again, in 2023, we'd be asking for 250,000, 50 of it, which would go to the design of 5701. We do know that there are, um, new members on the council that may not be as familiar with the process or what the recommendations of that study are. So we would engage the council again to have a conversation just to make sure that we're hunting down the right direction. We don't want to go forward and say, here, design this and have the council go, I'm not sure I like this. So we would start that process back up. But that would be, uh, that would be where we would spend those funds over the course of the three-year period, 23 to 25. Any questions about that? Public art based on goals and objectives. We added, uh, five years' worth of funding for the public art. Uh, we were told, uh, or we were asked to put funding in there. Uh, we would reengage the public art committee, whatever form that takes, uh, and go through the process. So, uh, we followed the same kind of structure that we had when we, um, originally came up with the art, uh, process program. So about a hundred thousand dollars would be available for art, 15,000 dollars would be available for installation, any sort of other lighting. I think with our first piece of art, we kind of learned like, oh yeah, if we want lighting, that wasn't included in the budget. Oh, we actually need to bring some dirt and some plantings in. So we took what was originally a hundred thousand dollars a year and made it about 115,000. So this would be our five-year art program, uh, would be one year that we would be asking for approval. When we get to approval, if in year two, three, four, or five, we decide to do, put more money, put less money, not do the program, that would be up to the council. We would really just be asking for one year, but we have five years' worth of funding in the plan. So our intent would be to do five years. Any questions or concerns about that? Johnson Drive Street Improvements. This is Mackey to East City Limits. Mackey being just east of Antioch. Uh, we went in there and did sidewalks as part of a cars project two years ago, I believe it was. So this would just be the street itself. So mill and overlay, curb gutter and pavement markings. This would be our cars project for 2026. 71st Reconstruction Schweitzer to End of Pavement. Uh, 71st Street is from Schweitzer to the end of the pavement is just north of Schweitzer Senior Villas to the east of Schweitzer. And it is one of two segments that we still have in the city that are not modern profile streets. So this would be a complete reconstruction. When I say not, not modern profile, I mean, pretty much it's a slab of asphalt that's just laying on the dirt. Um, so we need to go in and it's old. I don't even know how old it is. It's falling apart. It's, yeah, it's, I mean, it's got water that runs underneath it. We need to, we need to do a complete reconstruction. Anybody that was around during Farley, I would probably compare this very similar to Farley. It kind of has a native kind of country road type of feel. It serves about three or four residents. Um, but a lot of people kind of are going to have some sort of opinion about what we should and shouldn't be doing on that street. So it's going to require a little bit of a public process.
At one point we had, I was a downtown street that we didn't make.
Benson. So we have, we have Benson and then we have Campbell.
What, what do we call that?
Yeah, a little section of Campbell.
It was like an alleys, it was, an alley street?
Yeah, it's Benson, yeah, a little U Street, Benson.
What's the term we use for that kind of a street? It's not a, it's not the standard size. We had a term.
Yeah, I mean, that's the original, what it's called.
No, but that's, that's the way it is now. When we upgraded it.
Non-conforming.
Okay. We had, we had a special term for it that we didn't have to have it be the full width and we didn't have to have sidewalk.
Not to do that, didn't we? I mean, I don't think we didn't have to. I think we just kind of said, hey, we're, we're going to kick this down the road a little bit.
And with the trail right beside the road, it's.
On 71st Street?
Right.
Yeah. We, we will probably.
Have sidewalk.
We will probably put the trail, and again, this is in 2027, but so you just know some of the conversations we're having. We've talked about, um, moving the trail next to the street, onto the street because it connects to the trail. Like it's not, I mean, that trail goes down to Turkey Creek. So we, the, the thought would be that we would put bike lanes and/or trail all on that street, and this is just conversation, and then we would plant trees again on the outside of that. So we would move the trail where it currently is closer to the street, plant the trees on the outside of that and everything would, would run down that way. It's in 2027, so those, these are just conversations about what we would do. We've even talked about, you know, because we're going to have an issue with the neighbors that had, that back up to the street, this is just out their back door. They kind of have that country feel because of that. I mean, it's, they're not nice trees, but they're, they block the road. We've even talked about, can we go out there and plant some trees now? And by when it's time to come tear everything up in three or four years, at least those trees will have some growth, but I don't know that we can, we know exactly where they're going to need to be. So it, it's not going to be easy. We're going to have a lot of people complaining about the views from their backyard. Likely the people that live on the street, they're not probably going to have a dog in the fight. They're just going to be like, thanks for redoing our street. But it's going to be, you know, it's likely going to be the people's that, that back up to that street. So your 2023, 2027 minor project summary for 2023, the first year which we will be asking for approval as part of the budget is your 75th Street Cars Project for half million dollars. Then we will go to design, um, in, for, for downtown revitalization for 5701. And then we will still have some funds left over in that, uh, year. And then we would have year one of the five-year art program. Uh, the other projects that would exist in there would be Johnson Drive Street Improvement, 71st Street Reconstruction, West Vernon Place Improvements. That would be the engineering because we're recommending the project for 2028 because that particular project, it will be tied into a mill and overlay that will come in 2028. So the engineering is in 2027. The project will show up next year. Any questions or concerns or statements or? Okay. And then we've got our annual pro, programs. So our mill and overlay program, I'm not going to read all of these to you, uh, but in 2023, the year, first year of the five-year plan that will be asking for approval will be Sherwood Forest. Uh, Sherwood Forest will be a mill and overlay. We will likely have to put in some ADA landings. We don't have to put in sidewalks and we don't have to put in crosswalks because of the difficulty of the neighborhood.
Okay. My question again was, so the ADA landings are essentially just a little square that has a ramp on each side? Okay. Do, um, again, we now have a polling tool. This might be a good use for it to see if they do want sidewalks up there because it could be the opposite. We just don't know. And, uh, with, with Vernon Place, we walked and knocked on every dang door and found out that they absolutely didn't want it. But, you know, have, my suggestion is that we engage and try to figure out the sidewalk situation. I know right now we're not planning to do that.
Yeah, we, we, we.
Can't do it. Is it too cost prohibitive or?
That and it's too difficult. I mean, it, it, yeah, it's too diff, but it's also cost.
The, the, the grade and whatnot would not be safe.
There are areas we could do it, but there are, but half, half that neighborhood, we, we couldn't do it easily.
Okay.
I mean, there are, the, the lower extent of that that backs up to West Vernon.
Right.
Is very problematic. I mean, it's very problematic to get sidewalks in there. Cause we even talked about, you potentially would have to take the sidewalk onto the street because the outer circle goes down. So you have, and you, then you'd have to chase driveways.
Right.
Or when you get right down to the southeast corner of that, the grades are so high that you'd have to put retaining walls that were, that would have to, would require railings.
So, so if, just to understand, we're not currently planning to do that?
We, we were not unless.
Okay.
Told to. And then we'd have to move all this around because that won't be enough money to do all that.
Right. No, I understand that. I just, like I said, I, okay.
Uh, I will point out in here, just, uh, and it'll be on the, another slide here, that in 2026, we've got the alleyways in downtown Merriam. So we would anticipate that finished with all of our major street construction in the So we would anticipate that finished with all of our major street construction in the downtown area, we would go in in 2026 and do the last of the alleyways, Kessler, Hocker, all of those things, so that those streets would all be brand-new also. We would have a brand-new road system within downtown Merriam. So your 2023 Reconstruction Summary for the CIP, recommended for 23 to 27, is going to be your Merriam Drive Cars Project from Johnson Drive to 55th Street. Your 50th Terrace Drainage Improvements, which is paving the way for that project the following year. 75th Street, Antioch to Schweitzer with Overland Park. Your Millen Overlay Program in Schweitzer, Sherwood Forest, I'm sorry, Sherwood Forest Neighborhood. Downtown Revitalization, 50,000 of which we would anticipate sending towards the design of 5701, the rest of which would go to enhance the Cars Project, which is the first line. And then Year One of our Five-Year Public Art Project. That's your 2023 Construction Summary. Any questions about that? Any concerns about that? Any?
That's just shy of seven million, right? Something like that?
I think we probably have a slide that'll tell you exactly what it is here in a couple of minutes. Or I can add it all up if you'd like me to. It is right at seven million dollars. Says the Finance Director.
It's also misleading because that's not all city and Merriam money.
Correct. That is not, which is why we don't have, yeah, we don't have a total on it because we will, we will get a revenue source on some of the.
You've done a really good job of leveraging local dollars with state accounting dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, that was one of the promises when we did the Street, Street and Stormwater. I mean, that was one of the things we focused on was the, how much we leveraged the local dollars for federal dollars and that we actually were able to turn $1 into $3 in many cases. And so I appreciate that. Thank you. So, and I, this is a slide that the last several years that we've put in here, this is simply just to point out that it's been a focus of staff. It's been a focus of the council to put some money towards downtown, the downtown Merriam Corridor. So in our Five-Year Plan, we've got about $20 million worth of projects. My guess would be with inflation, this will be probably over $20 million before, before we're all done. Merriam Drive, in '23, you've got Merriam Drive. You've got Downtown Revitalization in '23 to '25. You've got Merriam Drive, 55th Street to Antioch the following year. '26, you've got that Millen Overlay I called out a couple of seconds ago. And '27, we've got the Merriam Drive south from Johnson Drive to Shawnee Mission Parkway. And then we've got this $5.9 million sitting in here for Upper Turkey Creek. I pulled this slide out just simply to say that when we, at some point in time, are told how much we're going to end up paying, it could change the Five-Year CIP. We do not know exactly what our share is going to be of this project. It's a big hunk of money. It's floating and has been for years in our CIP. When we actually know, it could change some of those things depending on what year we're going to need that money. So it's just something to keep in mind. Any questions about your CIP? Okay. I want to thank Jim. I want to thank Todd. Jim's voice is a little shot, but I also get excited about presenting the CIP. Appreciate his work on the tour. Appreciate everybody coming out for the tour. That's always a good event. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Donna to talk about the financial highlights for our CIP program.
Much as Chris alluded, you know, we go through a process on the CIP and the whole budget. And really, whenever we're looking to see, okay, can we afford the, the Five-Year CIP? We take a look at the, we do take a look at the general fund and see what the outlook is in there. We try to see how much the general fund can transfer to the CIP. And we kind of base that on, we have standards for the minimum fund balance in the general fund. We say that it has to be at least 30% of operating revenue. We also look at, how much are we going to have to pay on our bonds? Because obviously, we want to fulfill our obligation to our debt. Part of that, and part of that is how much is the CIP going to have to contribute for the bond payments? The CIP is, we'll see in a slide a little bit, or, I'm sorry, the bonds, as we will see in a slide in a minute, are funded by the sales tax for the community center, a property tax, and then the rest has to come from a contribution from the CIP fund. We take a look at how much the CIP projects cost and then we can come up with how much the CIP funding is available and leverage those other dollars from the other entity. So we put all that together. The CIP funding comes from up to one-half of the 1% city sales tax, quarter cent city sales tax for streets and stormwater improvements, the city share of Johnson County Courthouse sales tax, all the grants that we can possibly get, and available TIF funds, although this is kind of restricted because they have to be in the TIF district. So putting all that in and kind of gazing into a crystal ball, we come up with our Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Forecast and ensure that at the end of the day, we're going to be able to afford all that. This slide really, I think, depicts just how all of those balance, those ending fund balances that we're projecting and where those amounts are coming from. And you'll see on the bottom, this general project, these are balances that we can use for any project that the city council deems appropriate. That lighter blue is your street and stormwater sales tax. And so that's certainly more restricted. It has to be on a qualified project. And then that yellow is your I-35 TIF fund balance, which is, again, more restricted. As you notice, you kind of have a little bit of a camel's hump and it kind of slopes down. That's very typical in a conservative budget format. You're trying to be conservative the further you get out. Because one thing that we do know is that when we get to 2027, whatever the ending fund balance is, it's probably not going to be what I'm projecting here. And so you want to be conservative and, in that way. I never want to come to you and say, oops, we're short $2 million. So, this slide lists out all of your projects in the upcoming year. You'll see in 2023, this shows that there's actually 9.5 million in projects. The majority of that is on Mr. Engel's slide. He didn't include those annual programs of about a million on there. And so that's the difference that we saw. Project expenditures, again, your general projects are on the bottom. Then you have maintenance-type projects. Your Upper Turkey Creek, you can see is a significant share of the expenditures in the middle years. And then your TIF or your street and stormwater. And again, here is the debt service funding. You're getting 65% of that from your quarter cent sales tax. You've got property tax and your CIP. I know when I first started here, we were projecting that CIP transfer to be closer to 1.2 million a year, but because sales tax revenues have done so well, that's actually been, we've been able to shrink that, which is really good news. So unless there's any questions?
I also think that it's, I mean, a pretty fantastic fact that in this Five-Year Plan, we pay off the community center.
Yes.
I mean, the community center's been open for all of two years. And in our Five Plan, Five-Year Plan that we're putting together, we will have paid for the facility. Not 20 years. I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty doggone good. I mean, that's pretty doggone good. I mean, that's something that we should be very, very proud of, that it's going to be paid off in this plan.
That's amazing.
I have a question, Jason. You had your hand raised, too, though, so go ahead.
How much do you feel removing the sections from District M in our TIF district will affect your numbers?
How much do I think? Right now, right now, really none at all. Again, my, my projections are based on really conservative that nothing happens there and that it remains status quo. So whenever we get something in there tangible, then we'll update that. So it would not have an impact.
David and I were just discussing, could we potentially get some of these graphs? Because it's way easier, like, understand in conjunction with the stuff that was in our packet.
Sure. Um, yes, we can, we can email this out.
Thank you.
Tomorrow. Anything else? Okay. As far as next steps go, as we've talked about, the program is a plan and we know that it's going to change every year. When we come and talk to you next year, those other years will be different. You're really only budgeting for the 2023 amount and your approval will occur whenever you're adopting the 2023 budget in August. So any feedback that you have on this can still be incorporated. It's not final until then. So please feel free to share any input you have with myself, Jim, or Mr. Engel. So, okay. I think that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate all of your effort on keeping the lights on and keeping us all scared that at the end of five years, we're not going to have any money left.
That's her job.
It is her job. Let's see here. Well, now we're going to jump into.
We'll have a lot of money in TIF, in the I-35 TIF district.
Well.
Maybe not.
It depends on how this next meeting is, how this next work session.